We had multiple appointments tonight, so we're gonna go right into our Ford Business Committee liaison. I'll start. So we had a little factory that came up maybe last week and we've got a couple more people interested in purchasing windows, but we're probably giving out public donations probably in January depending on how far we get. And we're gonna do a stainless factory tour tomorrow to just go over everything again with what's being done. And we talked to him because the bid was like three months ago and he is not gonna raise the prices. I'm like, everything else.
Where's the enforcement?
Okay, so it's not a bad, it's good. And most of them have been there before, but they want to go back, so. And that's it.
I think I mentioned before that I can work with solely this week.
I do conservation, I went to the Conservation Commission last week and interestingly enough, I don't believe the organization, but there was a federal organization that wants to purchase lands or in the power plant area, the Sagen Reserve. And it's for the water resource mitigation fund and want to purchase a wooden property at no cost of town. Can't go with the town, just we said it in the same conservation agreement as the rest of the land. So this little, they went to the Conservation Commission first, see if they had any lesson. But it's all green and they want to purchase a yellow box hole. And the interesting thing is this is the Kiddy property right here.
Oh, really?
So closes it and leaves us with a thousand four acres.
Good.
But there's gonna be no cost of town. They didn't come forward with a select one and say about, you know, drawing a board and. I don't, I didn't even, I can't raise names, Elizabeth Burth West, I think it's her organization. But yeah, they approached the Conservation Commission, they sought this property on their own for various reasons. And now they approach the town.
Do you need to, you know, like, you know, what reasons and why are you visiting the conservationist?
It's because of, it was identified as iceberg location in the American Valley National Conservation Plan. And it contains neat instances of British ice feds and Atlantic wet seashore.
Kingston, from what I understand, for some of our historians was the site on a glacier that went through it. There's a lot of interesting things about our ground, never mind the address. And because of the way the ice springs, you know, 10,000 years ago, Kingston, it was a little bit of a, how many is this the one?
So then first, then by the way, there's no, nothing else?
We had a few items that came up, one was about the liquor license application at Statelos. And I advised the planning board, you know, the concern that we brought about technically that application is on an address that doesn't exist.
But it's incorrect.
Okay.
And they may be incorrect, but the name was wrong.
Okay. And so the other item that came up regarding that is there were some questions about the board whether or not that would be subject to site plan review of the planning board if they were going to split it up like that. Because we had similar property with the 6086 house when they put another business within side of that business location. It was subject to site plan review and they put this one in, you know, the side of that 1866 house. But the board seemed kind of divided, a couple folks didn't think that it needs site plan review, whilst some did. But I think maybe that getting corrected with liquor enforcement may be the catalyst for them realizing they may need to come. At least notify, they have to notify the planning board in some way, shape or form. And that kind of, I think the board would make a determination of whether or not it would be subject to site plan review. Because some of the topics that came up is that because it's not really like a restaurant to like a license in a subset because it's completely central to that governance of our bars. So that the current occupancy currents are settled, have to change because those businesses have to be completely isolated due to the fact that the sculpting that's allowed on the food service on the other side of the restaurant.
And then, you know, solid work and everything to do that.
Yeah, and then where the transportation system goes.
Yeah, and there's pretty specific stuff regarding like, so our bars, they have none, no access or limited, no access to food and stuff like that. So I don't know if maybe this liquor license issue will be the catalyst for them to come before the board. But at this time, I, the board kind of agreed at this time, they don't have a party room or anything, it was more information to them.
Don't forget that Kingston has the same family members and that may have impaired the weather to be multiple or no.
I mean, definitely, I think there was, the people were thinking, well, there's kind of an access between, hey, having a meal here and going to a place where people can still have a drink and have a cigar versus like a restaurant and it's.
There's a difference.
But I don't know, just kind of a little bit divided on it, but we kind of agreed that until I talked before the board, that there's nothing that they're gonna take this time.
They may be able to watch this one again.
The other item that came up was the board just talking about the Comcast talking about the project of getting some industrial part. And I know, we got, we got the same one.
I, yeah, and I talked to the engineer and told the engineer, he doesn't think it's needed as some semi proof that it's not needed. But we're not gonna issue a building permit for Phil's zone until we have that.
Yeah, exactly. It sounds like DES is saying it's absolutely needed. They're the ones that Comcast just touched upon saying that they need the change department, so.
And the engineer was gonna talk to DES and tell them that wasn't needed. I think we'd look at that.
In fact, we had a conservation, say, if there were four two more articles, they've been, they've spent money on, on things in the area cap, but if there were four two more.
And then we did, we discussed resident property and confirmed that yes, the town paid a little to put in those trees. When the last extension expired on October 15th.
Of course.
And so how planner was going to be reaching out to residents to, and he was gonna report back to the planning board on that conversation tomorrow night, I don't mean tomorrow night, and I guess we'll go from there. So it may, the board may have a recommendation or may recommend that we report an action back to the select or that's.
I mean, why are you doing, it was something we had to impress them later.
I haven't, I mean, I happen to have seen a point on that. I'm not sure if that helped in the conversation with plan company, there's people that talked about some equipment in there, so. Hopefully that'll come off, I don't expect that to, but maybe we'll do. And yeah, the board did move some of their, some of the proposed warrant articles to public for the hearings or, you know, move to the warrant. Some of them just to be held out, they're waiting on a reply back from legal on one. So there will be, it looks like there, that'll probably be substantive changes tomorrow. So they'll probably have to repost that at the end of the vote to move it to the following meeting after that.
We have one more in the sprint.
Correct, yeah.
All right, I'm gonna answer what your committee meeting on the AMT. Hopefully that was going before the first week. You are sitting there and hopefully we shall have our information that we've been working before, but then we'll bring it in the back of the seat if we have it. What did that do something?
Did that take seven days?
Yes.
At eight?
Six five, six five. Okay.
Thank you.
New business, I understand you want to talk about this, like, correct?
Is this public time?
How about, um, I'm sorry. I can't read that.
So we're all filing to this morning, today. And just to reiterate, it went out in the tax bills that there is a winter parking ban when any snow removal operations take place. I guess a lot of people didn't read that in their tax bill. I have spoken to the police chief and he's willing to go and knock on doors to give people verbal warning on top of the outreach that we've already done. And then we will start telling, we do have a list of people who are frequent offenders. And those will be the first ones that will be towed. But just wanted to come inform the board that we'll be following the ordinance as written. And just wanna get the word out there.
One thing I've noticed is a lot of asking about roads and things like that in the middle of the streets.
Yeah, I almost took out a hockey net this morning. Walked out of the snowbank, yeah. But this is, I'm not worried about getting a basketball hoop, I don't wanna hit someone's car. If you have a basketball hoop in the right way and we hit it, it's your fault, not ours.
It's just a process, I can tell.
They're in the road.
In the road.
They're parking in the road.
And some of them are, the man's waiting for the road, so they're gonna get hit, you know, but.
We had someone with a commercial vehicle parked taking up greater than half of the road in a residential area. One area where both sides of the road were lined with cars, I don't even think an ambulance could have gotten down that street. So just need to kind of get that under control.
I'm usually not likely to see some of this stuff, but a lot of people don't expect to see what's done this morning. To be real honest, you know, they thought, well, we're gonna get a light sparrow and then change to bring them there. So I think we're going with police officers and letting them know that there were, there's a problem with great weight stuff now. Again, I'll give them that for the doubt that they probably didn't expect it, but they probably didn't expect to get someone knocking on their door either. So I'm thinking we can do that.
I did honk, I think most of the guys honked as they went by and they were in the way.
Are you gonna put something on the social media page?
Uh, I believe that should have already been posted.
We wonder if we can put it on the town page too.
What if DES didn't officially post it there, it's easy to just share that too. The unofficial town page, the management.
Yeah, and we did.
Their words.
We were able to utilize the Facebook pages to let people know that it was very slick last night. Unfortunately, we haven't got an RP icing liquid yet, that would have been a textbook case, where it would have been great. But just wanna keep you guys informed on that. Other than that, no issues.
We had this request for a trash item, they just wanted sign or anything.
Is it an extra or?
They wanted extra.
Second thing.
It's not mine.
Yeah, as long as there's no money.
We should do an official something before we sign.
Yeah, but it's got highway department signature, it goes after.
I think they put a place on there where there was extenuating reasons why you needed a second barrel.
He said we have four dollars to live in the hospital.
That's an extended reason.
But if you want to pay the money.
Yeah, if they want to pay the money. They want, if they pay, right?
That says right on top, says $687.
Are you still requiring a trash audit or something like that?
Uh, we're not requiring a trash audit, Waste Management may perform a trash audit before they deliver the barrel.
Yeah, 'cause I thought that was Waste, Waste Management, he kind of knows, you know, he's, he's the guy on the truck, he's seen it a long time. He has hot washes, hot seats, it's, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, we've actually had a member of the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee going on ride alongs. And again, known to authorities, frequent flyers, whatever you wanna call them. They seem to be the ones that always get a warrant sticker on there and they can take it off, put it in the bin, which is mostly not acceptable.
I've just got a very good bird with stacking the bag on top of the can while it's open.
A little bit of Janka?
Yes.
And yourself, so the price for the environment consulting, 129 or 125?
Can't see can't work.
Yeah.
If they do, maybe.
So you wanna load this?
I saw that last week.
You went to, looked that up to see if that was illegal, did you?
We don't see any legal apartment in there, that's, you know, it says three bedrooms, two baths, so it doesn't say about an apartment, so.
So I saw something on the property card that said residential conversion, residential to commercial conversion, so.
And they use it as commercial industrial.
Yes.
It's not really the, so I think there's, they do, they do like.
Why are you sitting there? Do we need to, you know, sm- smelly, careful, fun, I wouldn't, is this for our benefit?
Why?
Yep. I guess the intention of this would be, the one thing I hear from people is they don't mind paying taxes as long as it, they get something in return of value. And I know people want the roads clear and people want the roads paved. So this would be an attempt, if there is a budget surplus at the end of the year, that would go into a capital reserve fund to fund either, well, it would first and foremost give us a buffer against salt prices going through the roof like they did this year. So as I stated in there, it would be a minimum balance of $100,000. So none of it would be expended until we reach that mark, but that would allow us to have that in reserve if the economic conditions dictated that we couldn't afford it under the, you know, just based on how our budgets are set up. The other side of that would be road paving, in addition to the highway block grants and what we budget each year. We are not going to get ahead of it anytime soon. There are a lot of roads that need a lot of work and I don't need an engineer in firm to tell me that. Probably good to prioritize it, but, so this would give us the flexibility to put the money into the things that people at least tell me that they want out of the Public Works Department.
What, what, what does he mean to it?
So will be any accesses at the end of the year, like if there's anything left in the salt budget or the snow plowing line items?
Or just specifically those two items?
Well, yeah, and then the road rebuilding and hot mix line items. I, I didn't specifically call them out here because I didn't know what the board's pleasure was.
Oh yeah.
I mean, usually the hot mix and the road rebuilding line items we, we use every year and in addition to the highway block grant. But it would mostly be the, the snow line items.
I think we should be so specific, I think we should go with the snow, so maybe with the salt. If you go with those two, they can see how that goes a couple of years and then we need that more to issue it.
Okay.
To don't use the, the, my guess is they're gonna use the baby, is he just gonna say that those, they love the big boys and stuff.
I mean, we've always said, if you put in 300,000, just pull it down with the manual thing, but at 300,000, allowing you to use this too. Then you can take the 100,000 to pay it. If we use four, we could take 100 away from it. So sometimes we need to do a lot of making, because we have early day years, and I think this would kind of get a balance coming.
And if we get enough of a, you know, over the $100,000, that would, because there's another example of where asphalt went from $61 a ton to we paid $85 a ton this year. It would allow us to, if we do, you know, establish our priorities for paving, that would also give us some insulation against, you know, inflation in those commodities.
Okay, the one way to add this is a question.
And I think that's a good idea to ask the chairman.
I think that's the only thing to you.
Okay, I guess on that same vein, would you, there's been ongoing warrant articles with regards to the highway equipment capital reserve fund. I believe there's another one in there that I'm forgetting at the moment.
I think we should maintain, I think we should get rid of.
Yeah, I guess I can get numbers to Susan as far as what we're looking after that.
Just stay out of this too, one's buying, the other's one buying.
Yep.
Well.
Thank you.
Next.
Is that updated with the project form sheet?
Well, update to the updates is that we are getting more laptop than inspectors might have for the.
For store water kits, did you sign on the new ones or test kits?
Uh, we ended up, we actually hired a janitor this morning. Because of the amount of the test kits that you have, so I used five, like, two, like, guys in there that just go really quick and. It's fairly large, they're coming in, basically, they can bring that on.
So can they come up here and play with it?
Yes.
Okay. I don't see anything else.
It's just putting up here.
So considering water source feasibility study.
What do you think, say?
Water source, feasibility study still on there, I don't know.
Nobody's attached to it.
Yeah, we haven't been to it at all.
Yeah.
We need to get this, I want this bulletproof before we move on to the bidding. I'm gonna tag that one in here again.
Probably more money to put this in there.
That's true, true.
Yeah, so let's do that. All right, so new business, we got the 2023 warrant articles, we got this there, five and six come out, over. Does number five, where I mistake put that in on the first table, we decided we didn't want change for capital actions, so we're gonna go with a mistake, so we'll be going out. Also, we put the benefits head.
Um, that was three, that's switching that position the whole time, right, it's all days.
Yeah.
Same thing with other one, you know, just switching.
That is right. And then the others took their readout to the benefits and extracted, which required that it was the all ones.
Do you scan the eligibility on selecting?
Do you think any others that we talked about behind there were ready?
Yeah.
We can pull the ones that live in the different committees, we can, I think, carry it just.
I don't have a real. Uh, you have the yellow corporate, you have a little bit of the matrix that was done, surprising. Which pricing is very, very high, so we've gotta evaluate that, look at it.
Can we actually, you know, our resources also have been used and stuff that's been enhanced for public good, would this qualify? Really?
Almost period, you can qualify, definitely, they've taken almost all restraints.
But that, that's why.
But this is very.
Well, we can talk about it and see, yeah, this can be, it's actually.
350, 350, 360,000.
350, 360.
350,000 position is what they're quoting us. With about 100.
350,000.
I think where the break was. What'd you say, like, yeah, I thought, I think somewhere between like 60, somewhere 60 to 90 grand, but. Actually, we worked, we bought in the software.
Oh, it's a bit, actually.
Maybe I can do a bit there, but I bought software from the company, Agent Urus, he did a lot of work. It's the difference in that, because the guy next to you, without me, was phenomenal and reached a decent price for me since retired. I was tired.
We're still building, so money difference is where we're going, 49, 32, hell, for you. No, it's not 32 yet.
I think it's 25.
Yeah, so if it's 25, we're gonna shift it up to 32. And we're shifting it up at our pace and at the demand pace. So we not even get that this year, but we need to get approved, we need to get that. Because if some of these other big projects are, we'll need the, the help. And basically, I had a little general partner came in, maybe the other day, was playing, I don't know about, the, the comment on the ankle thing.
I said what's in there.
So there. Well, they think they need to go over some changes, so they're still.
See, that, when that keeps in, that's one, we need to try to get them off this whole. We gotta, we need to, like, we need to get tools, just to get that one.
Ford Business, anything else?
I had Ginger Bay, there, we just never accepted it, 25, the planning board, where the, this more.
They, they, the neighbors of Ginger Bay, they never even gave it back.
Well, but now, where is?
We gave them their admin.
Gave them, and then they did it in that one one system and it's shown on a couple of plans they turned in without the city map.
So the question is, do you want to adopt it as a private, or do you have to do that?
We need to adopt it as a private, put in years ago, so that enters why it wasn't put into town standards, because I don't think it is.
Basically a private.
And they show it, well, if it reacts as a private, it grows up.
Yeah, often, and Rob, we.
If you're a good, they let on, uh.
Talking, right? Yeah, because they first let it and then it, and we, what they did was it was a horse pass and then they made it, they bought it.
And they hid it and then they wrote prayers about naming in case there's a 911 call, which you probably did the right thing, but you shouldn't come to this board and have.
Okay, dropped it. But Ford Business, as economists, a couple of purchase holders in the end who were for recreation commission, that is by playroom equipment to, it was one of my houses, coming from last year, they were designing this, get that away, so.
We jumped in on that last week, didn't we?
Yeah.
Um, so do you need to vote to adopt it in a way, I mean, I'm sending stuff to the map, right?
I agree with you, adopt the map, I can tell you what it gives, what it gives, where it says it is, and if it's a private, why do we want it?
We still have the dot, it's a private board.
Thank you.
And then we'll do it next Monday if it's, when we try to send all the maps out.
November 19. November 19, 2019.
Did they go with that?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I remember us discussing.
Well, maybe it's harder.
Well, when I was in the other day, I heard that's one of the, that keeps.
It is.
I asked the question.
Don't, don't forget that.
I think she, I think she was telling me that it's up to the supply board to adopt it, so that's why I went to accept.
Oh, we're gonna just make sure the planning board, sorry, I'll check and then we'll do it next Monday again. Anybody have any other questions?
Did you wanna talk about that grant, we need to make.
Oh, PFAS grant. The state is pushing us to apply for it. Is there any reason not to apply?
Yes, many.
Okay. Stanford and Angie calling this morning, just her from her connection at DES saying she's found 980,000 dollars for grants that will go quickly. You want your account to apply, so she's asking us, so what's the catch?
As with all these grants, they tell you, oh, you can apply, and then if you decide you don't want it, no problem. But then when you get the grant and you decide you don't want it, then you're on a list and you're not prepared to get that again. I would be very disappointed if PFAS are a fraction as bad as they say they are, that $900,000 is the best they're gonna give us. We're not the only community dealing with this, this is going to be an ongoing issue for multiple communities.
And we wouldn't give the nine, that, that's the.
That's the, yeah, right. So we end up with 20 grand, we'd be on the hook for some ridiculous requirements and regulations and we'd spend the 20 grand trying to beat the requirements and regulations and be in worse shape than we are now.
Well, does that phrase on fucking maybe make any sense?
Well, I mean, my theory on it was that if they tell us we have to start doing salt or certain treatment systems that we would try maybe one or two a year, then we'd have to bet. And but, you know, I don't know, we got, what is it, 100,000, we put that line up. But if they offer us money, we can put in systems that no cost of town and then make them, we're getting to make them, remember?
The state already offered equipment systems in how across the rest of the city, the mail, the lawn, and, you know, the cops, makers.
The $1,800 per unit maintenance.
I don't know, can we use that money for that fund to make?
I have not read any of that, but I would say the half, the half empty glass side of me looks at this. Right now, we're providing water, we're meeting the health requirements of the residents who are potentially affected by this. Signing up for this, we're under their thumb, we need to do what they tell us. Right now, they don't have any legal justification that I'm aware of, because I'm pretty sure they would have used it by now to make us do something else. They really don't like the fact we're, what we're doing right now is meeting all the requirements. It's not a long-term solution, but.
And what I said to DES and meaning was, we wanna get the next round of testing done and see how we stand and make some decisions.
Yeah, I think the question was, what is our long term? Well, next little decision, we don't know yet, but some of the old, the treatment systems equipment.
We've just learned about the standard that you just passed, I'm sorry.
This is what we're gonna do, right, we're gonna grab next year and maybe.
I, I mean, the reality is it's gonna be, end up like the MBT fund, is, they're gonna take.